Bella, I'm checking on one of my constituents.
Oh, boy.
Constituent line.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the meeting of the Mayorville Town Council for today, Tuesday, July 27th at 6:30 PM. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Let us pray. O Lord, for the beauty of the earth, for the glory of the skies, for the love which from our birth over and around us lies. Lord of all, to thee we raise this our prayer of grateful praise. We pray for your blessing upon this time, this meeting, for the deliberations that take place. We pray for our community and ask that your blessing would reside with us as we seek to do better. And we pray that you would help us in our efforts to make this a good community. This we pray through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now the pledge. Mr. Hardaway, would you lead us tonight, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call to council, please. Madam Clerk Treasure.
Councilman Spann.
President.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman White.
Here.
And Councilman Bella.
Here.
All seven present.
Seven present. Petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we have the reading of the proclamation in celebration of Mayall Organics, their business success. Did they make it to the meeting?
No.
I don't see them.
I did receive an email from Candace that they were on, they were planning on attending.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
If the council doesn't mind, I think I'll just move this farther along in the agenda so that if they do show up, we can do it at that time. Moving on to the consent agenda, the accounts payable register voucher approval for July 27th and the approval of the town council meeting minutes for July 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committees, budget and finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, I don't really have anything, but I'm going to get with Tricia this week so that we can start scheduling our budget hearings with the department head, because I think that we're getting ready to go into August now.
Yeah.
So we need to sit down and start formulating a plan for our bu- 2022 budget. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public works and utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, we have a purchase approval for new equipment. I'll relieve to Mr. King. Where is that?
I think that's on there from the last agenda.
Yeah, sorry.
Apologies. Unless you want to buy something.
Nothing for, well, no, you're not getting anything more right now. That is all, sir. I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you. Elections, public relations, and town beautifications, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, Steve and I have been investigating the, uh, the three bridges and we need to schedule a committee meeting uh, to discuss the signage on 61st Avenue, um, I-65 over US 30 and the 93rd Avenue Bridge. Uh, I don't know, Steve, if you've gotten any further with NDOT.
Yeah, that will be, um, I talked with NDOT about it. They are, um, they are in favor of it, um, of the project. That'll be, have to go, just go through the NDOT permitting process. Dave Schilling from Robinson Engineering, he's their lighting guy. He's going to help us out with, uh, getting service points and, and getting a design together for that. We'll get it, uh, we'll get it done and get it presented.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve? Oh, real quick, Mr. President, I might be in the wrong committee, but can you mention? Pat and or Steve, go ahead and start reaching out to whoever our contact is with the road tracks on Broadway. They're starting to get to where they used to be.
Yeah.
I know it's a bit of a process. I might as well start the process now.
So, yeah, you mentioned, so I talked, there's a, there's a gentleman we deal with, um, his name is Clint. I don't remember his last name. But I, we did talk about that. He said that sometime in August he could come out if we provided traffic control and he could grind down that, that hump in the middle temporarily for right now to make it easier. So, uh, we're looking at sometime in August for that, but we, we have talked to him, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Question for Steve. Could you update me on what are you talking about over 61st Avenue, over I-65?
So, what we're talking about is, um, branding the town. So if you drive down, uh, you know, State Road 49 in Valpo or, you know, Michigan City on 894, they have, uh, letters up there, you know, Michigan City or Valparaiso. I think there's even some down south on I-65.
119's got them too.
So we talked about, uh, branding the town and putting illuminated letters up on the bridges, the bridge railings over I-65, um, in a couple of locations and Route 30, you know, that say the words of Mayorville so people know where they're at and they, you know, the name jumps out at them and just, you know, branding the town.
When that happens, make sure that you tell me about it.
Sure.
I want to see exactly what's going on.
Oh, absolutely.
I want to make sure that my constituents all have, so have input on what's going to be in their community, so definitely make sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Uh, one last thing, Mr. President. I know you had been investigating, um, flower baskets, uh, with Hubinger. Uh, we need to revisit that issue.
We should have a quote in about, uh, next week sometime.
Next week? Okay.
I, I, I got one thing for you, Sean. At, uh, on 61st Avenue coming off I-65, I don't think that that sign there has any flowers around it.
No, it doesn't, Rich. You're right.
Is there a reason?
I don't know, because the one I see going in, into work, uh, going up at 53rd Avenue in Cleveland, they planted flowers there. In fact, I saw the, the workers working on it the day they planted them. Uh, it's been about three, four weeks ago now.
Everybody's got them except.
Everybody's got, except for that one?
Exactly.
Yeah. And that's the one where we had Dave Lassner move that for sale sign, wasn't it? For a long time, that property was for sale.
Yeah.
And we had the, the commercial insights right next to the town of Mayorville sign?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Doug Lee is the guy that lives there.
All right.
I'm sure we could just call Hubinger. It's got to be an over, it's got to be an oversight.
Let's add that to the list, Pat.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Yes, I like to make sure when we get that from Hubingers that we see the quote, actually.
What?
The quote, that they're going, how much they're going to do it, or you just ask that one particular, um, whether, are they florists or are they just like landscape?
Well, Hubinger takes care of all the other signs.
All the other signs, yeah.
I think it's just an oversight.
They did all the, the community center.
Remind them that that one also needs to be included in our existing agreement.
So, so in the terms of flower pots, we, we're just talking about in a parking lot here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
That's all.
Thank you. Environmental affairs, Mrs. Uselak.
Yes, Leonard just informed me that we had a person pass away yesterday from Lake County from the COVID virus. And with this new one, Delta, I don't know much about it, but I guess it's hitting a lot of the states and people are getting sick. And so we have 60 or 70 more new sick people in our area at this time. So I'm wearing my mask tonight because we were told we didn't have to, but we can if we want to, and a lot of us are wearing it and some of us aren't. But if you have the two shots, that's good too. If you don't, please go get them. That's all I have, Mr. President, at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Additionally, um, I don't, I don't know when the last time we 360, used the Clorox 360.
Yeah, I don't either.
Um, we paid a lot of money for it. It is a good machine. I think that's a, like a preemptive way of looking at things, even after the, the fair, the job fair, it was quite a few people in there. Got quite a few people coming around in this area, so in the terms of making sure that we're safe, because we don't know when this Delta virus is going to jump off and, and really take off. March has been doing a good job on monitoring that, but I, I, I just want to make sure specifically that, uh, Pat knows that we should have some kind of record of when we actually, uh, are doing like a preemptive or a sanitized. Even though I know your guy, the guy comes and sanitizes this area here, I think the 360 would be more efficient and, uh, attaching to that type of virus. Thank you.
I think that's called the Clorox machine.
Yes.
Right? Clorox machine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Girdon, could we get a schedule from Bobby, our new custodian, and make sure we're spraying all over, or are we doing that?
Um, I, I do not know the last time that we used that specific machine, but yes, we'll get a schedule.
Okay. And then let's, uh, let's send it to the council.
Yes.
Thanks. Moving on tonight to personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as everyone knows, a few weeks ago, we posted for a, uh, human resource director as well as an economic development director, and we had two, uh, in-house employees that applied for those jobs and we interviewed them. And tonight, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we appoint, uh, Kathy Pettit as our human resource director.
I will second that motion. After talking with our attorney and asking him several questions, which he brought to my attention. So I think at this time you might be correct in that motion. Thank you.
Mr. President?
One second, Leonard, please. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mrs. Uselak. We're now open for discussion. Mr. White.
Yeah, this is basically along the lines of parliamentary inquiry. Uh, what I'd like to know tonight is where this council stands with, in the terms of nepotism, also in the terms of cronyism. I didn't want to go there, but it's thing, uh, we could have tabled this so I could have a better understanding why we even going this far with it.
We have an attorney right here who's going to explain it to you right now, Mr. White. It's not a problem.
Attorney?
It's in our handbook.
Sure. The attorney works for all the council, correct?
He does. He sent out a, he sent out his opinion.
Well, and again, I sent out my opinion and I discussed it in an executive session.
I, I remember that, but I still want to know more. If this is not nepotism.
There's no more to, to know. That's the issue.
Point of order, sir.
Point of order?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. You.
What's your point of order?
Uh, the president came to debate or get inside of the discussion while the, while the conversations on the floor. It was in Mr. Joe. I want to hear from him. He's the attorney.
Well, again, we've discussed this in executive session and I've issued a written opinion on this, so I don't know what more there is to discuss.
Well, if you, you have a written opinion, I mean, anytime you have to have a written opinion, you know it's something that's, that's kind of, uh, from my opinion, uh, something that has to be really looked at hard. Anytime we got to lea- get a legal opinion, hire people. I won't go into detail in the terms of why. I just want to know, does this sort of put a record?
This does not fall in the nepotism statute.
Cronyism.
I, I don't know what cronyism is.
Well, you're an attorney. You should know.
No, I know what nepotism is. I don't know what cronyism is, is not defined under Indiana code.
Is it defined under federal law?
Not aware of it.
You've got another attorney here. I, I just want to know. If not, then I just move on with it, but.
Well, this, this isn't a hiring anyway. This is a internal promotion of an existing employee who's been here for 23 years. So, I, I don't know.
I just think it's a little conflictual here. I, I, not, nothing against anybody in here personally, but.
That's your opinion, Leonard. That's fine.
Right, right. I, I did talk to my constituents. I told them my, uh, my view and my, uh, on what's happening. They said that, hey, we're begging you. So I just want to know, as we move forward, how that's going to impact the Clerk's Treasurer's office, because I don't know. I haven't talked to her about it. She hasn't said anything about, um.
Kelly, how's it going to impact your office?
Well, as long as, um, you know, I hate to see Kathy go. She does an excellent job, uh, you know, I created payroll administrators so she could continue to do what she had been doing previously for the previous Clerk Treasurer, um, and I haven't had any issues with her work product at all, um, so she's been a good employee. As long as she's willing to train the next person that I can hire and be available to answer any questions, as long as, so we can continue our payroll run smoothly for the town of Mayorville.
So Kelly, didn't you have a Zoom call with, uh, Mr. Hardaway and I this past week?
Yes, I did.
We discussed training and the need for training of someone new.
Yes.
And that we would never abandon that position, that Kathy would always be available to do the training?
Absolutely.
And that we would not even pull her out of your office until you felt comfortable with her replacement. I believe that's what we discussed. Is that right?
You definitely, both you and Mr. Hardaway assured me that I would have whatever support needed and that Kathy would be willing to train, so.
Okay. Well, that still stands, Kelly. Nothing's changed since our Zoom call.
Well, I didn't say anything.
Well, you said that was your main concern. You shouldn't have.
No, no, no. I, I, I said, as long as she's willing to train, I'm fine with it. She's a good employee. I hate to lose her, but, you know.
Of course.
Right, so.
That's why she's getting a possible promotion, because she is a great employee.
Yeah, I have no problem with Kathy.
So, Mr. White, you feel comfortable now that we're not going to abandon the clerk's office and?
I do.
Pull out a prized employee and just leave a big old hole there?
Yeah.
You would never do that. That hurts us too. It's not.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and I, I think I talked to her a little bit because, you know, I don't want to say that part, but I talked to Kelly a little bit about it and uh, I didn't know that you actually and, and Councilman Hardaway had, had a Zoom conference with her until.
We did.
Tonight, yeah.
And we explained to her that this, this could be a possibility, because that was an executive session and so we shared it with her.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any more questions on that. Thank you.
All right.
No more. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Okay.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor with a proper second to promote Kathy Pettit to the position of human resource director. Is there any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Spann?
Yeah, why is, uh, why is she the only one that's being promoted? I mean, are there other people to be selected for that? Or is it just one person?
The job was posted and she was the only person who showed interest in having a promotion, and she just so happens to have a lot of experience in payroll, insurance and things like that, which kind of tie into human resources. She was the only one who signed up.
Nobody else applied.
Payroll, that don't, that don't mean we can't look at other people, Richard.
Okay.
You know, I think somebody else should be looked at.
No one else had interest in the job?
It don't.
Or internal, or internal?
Be someone from the town, does it?
Well, well.
Could it be an outside person?
That's your opinion. We, we like, we want to create some.
That is my opinion.
Some opportunities for existing employees.
That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President?
We look at somebody else other than someone that's already working in the town. That's all I'm asking.
Well, there's a motion on the floor and we're going to vote on it tonight.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. I wanted to come back, um, because of, of, uh, uh, additional issues on my concern with how we're going to pay for this. And I, I know I heard Tris. I don't know if she's here tonight, um, but I do know I heard her say that someone that's going to come out of, uh, police department, that's another reason I can't support. We can't touch police dollars or public safety.
There's nothing coming out of the police department.
So, but she, she, she did make that statement at, at the last council meeting.
It had to do with the IT position. It had nothing to do with this position.
No, I actually asked her what we were going to pay for it. She said, well, I'll take it from this fund, that fund, and, and, you know, police department had it. But, but even with the IT position, um, I thought that was a lot for, uh, that position. I think that even one time that Richard Hardaway said that we used to pay Mr. Donahue 500 bucks a month. Now I understand this situation is supposed to be like $70,000 a year. So where do all those dollars come from? Because, and the only reason I'm asking this again is because I did the budget along with Trista and I think everybody else that was in here uh, that wanted to look at it. Those dollars weren't there. And so I'm trying to figure out how, how we're going to get the dollars to pay for two new positions. Well, actually three positions. I think that's going to run us about like 130,000. If they get secretaries, that's another 40,000 apiece, so that's a couple hundred thousand dollars. An additional to, um, uh, the, uh, IT person, that's going to be a dollar. So we're looking at almost $300,000 in new jobs, for a better lack of words. Did you calculate that, Mr. Counsel?
Sorry, what?
Did you calculate that amount of money?
That wouldn't be his, it wouldn't, wouldn't be his, uh.
It's, it's not my legal opinion to calculate money.
Yeah, the, the money's been moved. We, we voted on that last meeting. Madam Clerk Treasure, didn't we do the resolution?
Yeah, the money was going to be moved from the general town council, um, line item is what she said, and there was going to be money moved from police to help fund a different position that, that they were going to be sharing with the town. But, um, Trista said at the executive session that the money was in, there was enough money in the, um, general town council line item budget. So that's where the money was going to come from. And I believe we've already moved it.
Uh, we did. We voted on the last council meeting. You supported it.
Yeah, I think I do, um, but I was just telling you about my additional concerns, more or less.
Okay.
Specifically with the amount of money. I know we can get it from somewhere, but I just knew at the time that when we did the budget back in 2020, those dollars weren't mentioned, and I just wondered how do you, even, is that coming out of your budget?
Yeah, actually, it's coming out of the town council budget, the administration.
Town council, town administration budget.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question? Doesn't that seem like that's favoritism, Rick?
It, it doesn't to me. We're creating new positions.
It seems like it to me, Rick. I mean, come on, man.
Favoritism.
Yes, sir. Favoritism.
Will someone call for the vote, please? This isn't a workshop. We have a call for the vote. Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
We have a call for the vote and we're going to vote.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I don't think you asked, Mr. Spann. I don't, but you didn't ask him, Mr. Spann.
Please clarify a call for a vote.
We have a call for a vote right now. The vote, the vote's standing on the floor. We need to call, roll.
Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call.
Councilman Spann.
No.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Abstain.
Councilman White.
No.
Councilman Bella?
Yes.
Five yes and two no, one abstention.
I think there's four yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. It's four.
Four, one and one.
Four.
And the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving right along, we also, uh, posted for a economic development director and one person internally applied for that job. And, uh, her name is Angie, and I'm not going to try to mess up her last name.
Chilcot.
Chilcot.
It's not very hard.
It's not hard.
Well, okay, but it's spelled hard. Trust me. So at, at this time, I'd, I'd like to make the motion that we pro- that we, uh, promote Angie as our ec- new economic development director.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit. To promote Angie Chilcot to the position of economics development director.
Mr. President?
Open for discussion, Mr. White.
Yeah, so, am, am I seeing this right? So both of these positions were to be voted on separately? We had to make motions for both of them, obviously. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. No more questions on that one either.
Any other, any other?
Excuse me, sir. But, but here's what I will say. This is also coming out of the Clerk Treasurer's office as well.
Mm-hmm.
So she's losing two employees, um, phasing out instead of just leaving right away. So Kelly, I'm asking you, does that, how does that impact your office? I know you're going to hire someone else, but in the short term, how does that impact your office?
I, I did have a Zoom call with Councilman Hardaway and, um, Councilman Bella. Both of them assured me that Angie would train whoever I selected to replace her, um, and that she would be available to the office, because as you know, Angie's position of, as bookkeeper is essential to the town. It's very, very important. Um, and that she would be available throughout the year if necessary for the new per- until the new person was comfortable enough to be able to handle it without her, especially since we're going into budget seasoning, season and, um, and end of the year closing out. So Angie's willing to do that. She's willing to train. I did speak with Angie a little bit, uh, earlier and congratulated her. And we're going to work out a training schedule tomorrow. Um, so with their assurances and with Angie's blessing that she's willing to help all the way through, I'm happy for her.
And she's going to stay there until you're comfortable?
And she's willing, yes, right. And they, that she can, she can actually stay until I'm comfortable that the next person has it under hand, because what we don't want to do is in any way jeopardize the town of Mayorville's finances.
Okay, thank you.
There'll actually be a dotted line going to Kelly on both positions till the end of the year, so they're going to report to Pat with a dotted line reporting, uh, to Kelly.
Thank you. And here, and here's the thing, uh, President Bella, uh, if I know these things, I wouldn't have to ask these questions. Seriously, um, I need to know.
With all due respect, Leonard, you were in the interview for Angie, and I specifically told you as RDC president what Angie does for the RDC, that she handles every checking account for the town of Mayorville. Did I not?
You said.
Did I not?
You said.
I know I did, Leonard.
Want to let me answer the question?
Well.
You said, you, you said these things, but what I'm asking you is that this is not something that's saying TIF districts and everything is saying economic development director. It's not saying nothing about TIF districts or anything in that nature.
Those are the TIF districts, Leonard.
Those are the T- we have four TIF districts. You've been on the redevelopment commission for two years now.
Right. So I've been on the devel- the redevelopment commission for two years. We never had a person that basically that was in an economic development list.
Would you like Pat to rattle off all the projects we've had in the last 18 months, why we need this position?
Mr. President, we're veering off the track. I have to call for the vote.
Well, we always do, Jeff. That's the problem.
We have a call for the vote, gentlemen. Call for the vote. Madam Clerk Treasure.
Councilman Spann?
No.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
No.
And Councilman Bella?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Two no.
Five two to motion carries. Can we ask?
Finally, uh, as you.
Mr. Hardaway, would you, would you mind one second? Can we ask, um, Kathy and Angie to come forward and listen, congratulate them, um, on their new positions? Thank you for taking on more responsibility.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Ladies, they, these are really good employees, so I want to say, I'm, I'm not happy to be losing them, but I'm happy for them that they are going to be able to do, to, to get a promotion and to be able to do more, and it's meant, it's going to be better for them and their families. So congratulations, ladies. Um, I look forward to working with you guys to train who replaces you. It's going to be a hard act to follow because you all were really good employees.
Thank you, Kelly. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ladies.
Congratulations. Mr. Hardaway.
Okay, thank, finally, Mr. President, uh, the last thing I have is that there's a confidential settlement agreement that I'm, I'm making a motion that we tabled at this particular time.
Okay.
Uh, to give the council an opportunity to, in an executive session, to get a full understanding of exactly what this is rather than trying to hash out, hash it out tonight.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit. I'm sorry, Mr. Hardaway. Chair will recognize Mr. Pettit for the second to table this confidentiality agreement. This will be on the agenda for our uh, workshop that we're going to have next Tuesday at four o'clock, executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Mr. White, did you vote?
Um, no.
You don't want to vote?
I don't want to vote.
Six ayes, one abstention. Motion carries. Public safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Uh, nothing at this time.
I have one thing.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Under, at 53rd and Broadway, that stoplight has been out for two weeks. Do we know, do we have any idea when it's going to be fixed? I'm not going to, you ride down Broadway and.
I'm not going to, you ride down Broadway in the, in our sister city.
You know that signal pole's down, Rich, right? By the CBS?
Um, how long does it take to put a?
I know. I go home that way every day.
I know. How long does it take to put a signal pole back up?
I won't say, I won't say anything about Endot, Rich. Right, Steve?
It, well, that's why, we have the conversation now, 'cause I wanna get it fixed. I don't want, I don't wanna be like other communities where you got a bunch of flashing lights.
Yep.
That's where I'm at with it.
Yeah, it's not safe.
Is it, is it flashing Fifty-third and Broadway? No, it's four-way stop sign in the middle of the.
They got a four-way stop sign now. The pole was knocked down a few weeks ago.
Okay.
But at some point.
Endot should get out and fix it.
Yeah, it's been like a month.
If it was covered by a boat, it would be here by now.
Yeah, okay.
It's been a month already.
It's been like a month.
Has it?
Steve, please expedite that tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Hardaway.
Or we could always hire Midwestern, Rich, who takes care of our signals and send Endot the bill.
Whatever we have to do, Sean.
That might be a thought, too.
Yep.
Don't keep poking me, Sean.
Nice, Steve.
I got it. So, ju, just while I'm up here, so just so you know, I mean, you know, we're having the same issues with Endot all up and down Broadway with the weeds growing and the delineator posts and the, you know, the curb that's deteriorating. I did reach out to, to Endot, um, after our last council meeting. And I sent in a service request complaining about the weeds, uh, the faded signs that you can't see. Um, and just, just the mess that Endot has left that. And actually, what was, I think, was it this week, Kevin? I think it was, uh, Tuesday, they had some employees out there, you know, cleaning up the south end. And hopefully, they're gonna continue, but, um, they're gonna get it, they'll get another nasty service request.
Give me a list, give me a list of what you've got going on Broadway, and when I go back to Nervousy, I'll catch the.
Absolutely. Okay.
Uh, thank you. Before we move on to, on the committee reports, I did notice that Monique and Melvin Rodriguez, um, came to the meeting. We did hold off on the proclamation till you arrived, so welcome. Uh, would you please come up to the podium there, and we have a presentation for you? Madam Clerk Treacher, let's go back to the communications and read that proclamation, please.
Sure.
And your family, is that your daughter?
Yes, this is one of our daughters.
She's more than welcome to join you. Let's do that. So... Is this Mackenzie or Mia?
Mackenzie.
Mackenzie.
I heard you're the smarter one. Is that true? No? You're smart. See, that was a good answer.
She said that?
That's right.
Go ahead.
The town of Maryville State of Indiana proclamation, in recognition of Myel Organics' company's success and business expansion plans in Maryville. Whereas Myel Organics, a fast-growing, black-owned and community-focused natural hair care company, celebrates its seventh year in business in the town of Maryville. And whereas Myel Organics is planning a groundbreaking and additional fifty thousand square foot space to continuous work servicing the natural hair care industry globally. And whereas the Myel Organics Natural Hair Care and Beauty brand, along with the founder and CEO, Monique Rodriguez, believes, believes healthier ingredients encourage healthier hair and skin. And whereas Myel Organics, launched in 2014 at the creation of the brand's first project, the Advanced Hair Formula, a unique proprietary blend of herbs, amino acids, and minerals to support healthy hair, skin, and nails, and immune systems. And whereas Myel products are black-owned and CEO-made and tested with every product that leaves the facilities has been formulated and developed with a level of care and attention that is unmatched. Myel is sold nationally at Sally, Target, Kroger, CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Rite Aid, HEB internationally in Europe, Africa, and online at wwwmyelorganics.com. And whereas during the past seven years, Myel expanded their product lines and increased their distribution and invested in their community through the More Than a Strand philanthropic arm. Myel is excited to continue innovating and developing new products and grow awareness of the beauty brand and reach even more consumers to give them products that they deserve. And whereas Myel recently announced that Berkshire Partners, a private equity firm, has committed historic nine-figure investment to the company that supports the beauty's, beauty's, beauty brand's growth plans and furthers its mission to educate, empower, and excite cus, consumers and invest in the community. And whereas the investment additionally supports Myel Organics' expansion into the additional international markets, including the Caribbean and Africa, and the investment caps are at an impressive period of growth rate despite the challenges of a pandemic that led to the closure of more than forty percent of black-owned businesses. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town council of the town of Maryville, Indiana, serving within its authority as legislative and executive branches of local government, does hereby proclaim and congratulate Myel Organics Company, a local minority-owned business who has shown dedication to the community, provided empowerment through its education, and generated economic development, and urge all the residents in Maryville to support this business and help celebrate its seventh year in business as well as the multi-million dollar expansion and growth plan and attend the anniversary year groundbreaking celebration on July twenty-third, 2021. We missed that. Well.
I was there, Matt. I was there, Matt. For treasure, trust me.
At twelve noon at eighty-seven oh seven Louisiana Street at Maryville, Indiana. Please accept our town's congratulations and acknowledgement of your continued efforts to be a model business within our great region, and I use your products as well.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. Pettit, you have a motion for us.
I have a motion, Mr. President, to, uh, adopt this proclamation, uh, on behalf of the, the business in Ward Six, which, as I told Monique and, and Melvin, I go out my back deck and I've been watching the progress. They happened to pick probably the hottest day of the year on a slab of clay dirt, uh, but it was a beautiful event. Uh, very impressed. And as I told them, uh, I think the council should be very proud that a business is being retained. If you don't know their story, Monique started this in her garage, uh, she was a nurse, and started this in her garage. They moved to Maryville, and instead of leaving Maryville, going to a larger facility, they decided to stay in Maryville and expand. And, and business retention is extremely critical. Uh, job creation, they have a fantastic operation over there, uh, all pink, by the way. Which is kind of impressive. So again, folks, thank you very much for staying in town. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Well, one second.
I'd like to second that.
Mr. White has a second for the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I wanna say is, you know, we got all concerned as a town when the Holiday Star Plaza left and all that closed and, you know, losing our identity, so to speak. But since then, we've done a great job of bringing in development here, uh, big names, Domino's, Amazon, you know, Midwest Truck and Auto Parts, and now we can add Myel to the list of companies who are making a difference for many people and doing a great job. So thank you for staying in Maryville, and congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
A nine-figure donation?
Thank you very much.
That's great.
Yeah, it's, you know, for us, we definitely appreciate this, uh, recognition. And one of the things that, well, the most important thing for us is community. So when we think about retention, that's truly what, what we represent. It's, 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 you know, how, how do you take yourself away from it and use less of me and more, more of him? We are a faith-based organization, and God is truly at the center in all that we do. Our mission is to continue to serve the otherserve. And so when we think about our communities, we think about the kids that haven't seen this, they haven't heard of this, but now they see this. And we're on a mission to help so many of us see this and understand that their current situation is not their final destination, right? They determine their future. And so we've just been, uh, so reluctant and fortunate to, to do what we have been able to do in such a short duration of time. But, uh, you know, we're, we're extremely excited of the future and what's to come. And obviously, continuing to reside and expand here within the Maryville district. So definitely, uh, appreciate the recognition and, uh...
Monique, would you say a couple words?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, this is definitely an honor to be presented with this proclamation. Um, as Sean Pettit said, you know, this started in my garage seven years ago. And to have the recognition from our community, um, is just amazing to me. You know, our mission is to continue to empower and excite women and men about healthy hair. And as Melvin mentioned, community is so important. We knew from the very beginning that being an entrepreneur was not about Melvin and I. You know, this nine-figure deal, it's a win for us, but it's really a win for our community. Because this is something that has never been done in our industry by a black female-led business. So this really changes the narrative and the trajectory of other black-owned businesses. Because, again, we tell this story so other private equity firms can look at other black businesses and see the value that they bring and deliver to the table. So, you know, we just wanna be that example for, you know, the next generation that's coming up. And that's our mission, to continue to inspire, train, and develop the new generation of entrepreneurship. So you can expect to see a lot more from Myel, um, and as we continue to grow and how many more entrepreneurs that will breed from the success that we have encountered. So thank you again, and we definitely appreciate this so much.
Great. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Back to the, uh, special committees and re, and committee reports. Public safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Uh, we are all finished, sir.
Okay. Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
I think the proclamation speaks for itself, Mr. President.
Okay. Very good. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Usalak.
Uh, yes, we had one park that was being rehabbed, and that was in Ward Six. And the last time I was out there, they were putting the floor on the park, in the park. And maybe Sean knows more about it. It's in his ward.
That's the last time I was there, too, Mark. They were working on the floor.
Yeah, I have not been out there lately, but I believe they should be finishing up pretty soon. And that is our last park in Maryville to be rehabbed. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
Uh, no report at this time, Mr. President.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center co-chairs, Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Pettit.
Uh, Mr. President, we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday at five PM to go over several things, uh, for the center and for some usages and things like that. Um, I would like to point out before I hand it over to Sean, that the concession stand is complete now, and it looks awesome. They did a really good job on it. And it is also the last piece of the center that hasn't been sponsored yet. So if there's anybody out there who is interested or knows anybody who's interested in sponsoring a piece of the center, this is the last piece of sponsorship, uh, that we have. So please reach out, and we'll go from there. Mr. Pettit.
That's, that covers it, I think, Jeff, until we have the meeting Thursday night at, uh, at the center.
May we extend an invitation to Monique and, um, Melvin?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Well, we do have, technically, we do have.
A half a sponsor.
A half a sponsor with Milestone, which is the former Walsh and Kelly, um, in kind of determining that the golf simulator wouldn't fit upstairs. Uh, I think Mr. King and Mr. Riordan reached out to Milestone, and they're accepting of sponsoring the concession stand. Uh, there was an inquiry by Karen Lauerman when we approved the Domino's building that they're contemplating that as well, Jeff. And of course, we would have to serve Domino's Pizza at the concession stand. So, uh, that is still, I haven't gotten a firm answer on that one yet, Jeff, so that's why I didn't bring it up, so. But yeah, Thursday night, what time do we call that for?
Five PM.
Five PM.
Mr. Riordan.
Uh, thank you, Mr.
Yeah, this is all right.
Pardon me. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would be remiss if I did not, uh, thank everybody, uh, beginning with the council, uh, entire professional staff, townwide, particularly the crew from the Dean and White Barbie Community Center in delivering, uh, on the job fair. In, in case someone's not aware, uh, we held what, uh, is moderately defined as a successful job fair. We had well over five hundred and fifty people walk through those doors. We had over fifty-five vendors there. And, uh, from start to finish, everybody did a fantastic job representing the town. So I, I did wanna single out the Dean and Barbara White Community Center staff.
Yeah, and they're, they're doing, um, Pat and I were at the Lake County Economic Alliance annual meeting last Thursday night, and this is private industry that has come into this meeting, uh, that Karen and Don, um, put on every year, and everyone was blown away, uh, including our former town manager, Tom Kileman. Um, and Barb Young has just been doing yeoman's work out there, booking the Mike Anderson Event Center. It's unbelievable what she's got going there. Um, so kudos to, uh, to Barb as well. Uh, Pat.
Anything else, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Special projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are fast approaching, uh, August fourteenth, which is our, uh, second, uh, fiftieth birthday celebration. And we're still looking for, um, people that were born in nineteen seventy-one that were, that are current, current residents or past residents of the town of Maryville. So far, I've only had two people contact me. So we, we need to, uh, do whatever. I just, I asked Linda to put it out on the marquee and to also reach out to the, uh, Dean and Barbara White Center and put it out on their marquee also. And, uh, if you could give me some artwork, I will send it down to PJ's and have PJ put it up on his marquee also.
Okay.
When is that date for that event?
Uh?
Eight fourteen. August fourteen.
August fourteenth. Twelve noon, Joe, for the picture taken.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Mr. Hardaway, um, have you, sh, our sign ordinance requires that those on-premise people put that announcement up.
Right.
Okay. And again, if you get me artwork, I'll see what's available on the Lamar boards, the Dairy Queen and, and the other ones, if you've got artwork.
I know there's a guy.
I got a guy in the sign business.
All right, well, yeah, we, we're, we're gonna be okay, but I, I just think we've got a lot of, uh, a lot of things planned for that day. We've got, uh, all of the, uh, equipment that the town, emergency equipment that we use here within the town, fire, uh, police, uh, ambulance, and, and the helicopter, weather permitting. Um, and so we are, we're looking for a great time. We've got a, uh, Hyatt Dog Venture coming in. Domino's Pizza's gonna provide pizza. Uh, Dairy Rich or North Star is going to provide, uh, ice cream sandwiches and popsicles. So we got a, a variety of things coming, and, um, I'm thinking that by it being on Broadway that we're gonna, we'll probably run out of food. That's, which is gonna be a good thing.
Exactly. Run out of food. Yep.
So I encourage everyone to, um, take some time out of your busy schedule on August fourteenth to participate in that. And secondly, everybody remember that, um, September the third, eleven-thirty to three-thirty, we're gonna have an employee appreciation, uh, day where, uh, some of us, I think, uh, Councilman Minchuck and myself have volunteered to man the grills for a while, to, um, do whatever. And if I'm not mistaken, uh, Councilman Pettit, your name came up to the dunk tape.
Okay.
No, they, they looked at me when they said that. I said, absolutely not.
After eighteen years, Rich, I'm sure the line's gonna be pretty long for me.
Uh, they, they were talking about taking a number.
Yeah. Reservations, Pat.
Right.
We'll need a lot of balls.
But.
A lot of balls.
And, but that's all I have, Mr. President, but we just need to, I, I see we've got the signs out now, the yard signs out. So I, I talked to, um, Mr. Riordan, and we're, I told him that we have to have the banner up, uh, Friday. Regardless of how we have to get it done, hook or crook, we need them up by Friday.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Uh, yes, I believe at the last council meeting a couple of weeks ago, I asked that Mr. Fletcher be part of this committee. Uh, I don't know if he's been informed. Pat, did you, uh, ask Mr. Fletcher or, or let him know when there's meetings?
I did not.
Okay, when, are you?
I, I will. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you.
I, for Mr. Fletcher, the next meeting is Thursday at two PM.
Right here in the conference room.
He's welcome to attempt.
Thank you.
Mr. White, keep the floor and give us a report on Lake County Solid Waste Management District, please.
Thank you for giving me the floor again. Uh, unfortunately, I have some sad news to, uh, talk about this time. Um, nothing going on with the, uh, Solid Waste District, per se, but, um, we didn't have an agenda. I'm sorry, we didn't have a quorum for the last meeting, uh, on the fifteenth, I believe it was. So that was passed. But, um, a long-term person that's been in, out in this building, you may remember, his name is Larry Anderson. He was on the, uh, the CAC Committee. He passed this week.
Oh, sorry to hear.
Uh, I, I think I told, did you get that information from him? Okay. So his services is gonna be, uh, this Saturday. Some parts of Sherrville, I don't, I don't have that exact address. But I just want to, uh, I'll take a moment to, uh, recognize all the good work he put me in. And he learned me a lot of things about not driving in the left lane when you're going down US thirty, because that's the speed lane, and that's state trooper that just sit there and wait for you. 'Cause he said, oh, Leonard, slow down. Like, I don't, I don't, I'm not slowing down. But then all of a sudden, I see a state trooper come across the center lane. So, um, gonna miss that guy, but thank you. Uh, nothing else on, uh, Lake County Solid Waste Management. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Northern Indiana.
I'm just going to wait for Mr. King's information so that I can forward that to end up.
Okay. I didn't see Mr. Lake with us tonight.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I spoke with Matt earlier.
Okay.
He had an obligation that he had to meet.
No problem. Thank you. South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, CVA.
No report.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
This is for Mr. Reardon, is there anything, you said there's no report, is there any activities that we need to know about from the last meeting that we didn't have, or would this still be something that we need to discuss in an executive meeting?
That would be correct, sir. I look forward to discussing it next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Did you get your invitation, Leonard?
Yes.
Are you going to be able to make it?
Yeah, I didn't know that was one of the items we'd be discussing.
It will be, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Department reports? Vicki?
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Anything else, Mr. King? You don't have to, Steve. Don't feel...
I'm going to make a brief. Last council meeting, I did give four reports, so I'm going to make a brief. The paving program is ongoing. Ward seven has been completed. Ward one, we're approximately ninety percent done. We did have a water main break this week on sixty-fifth Avenue, which has been repaired by Indiana America Water, so that street, we can get that paved now and get it out of there. Restoration work continuing throughout town in Wards one and Ward four. We're grinding and paving in Ward four, probably fifty percent done over there, and it's just ongoing. As I reported, I did reach out to NDOT a week and a half or so ago about concerns along Broadway, just, you know, the weeds and stuff, and I'll get that to Mr. Hardaway. I was excited to see some movement on it, you know, this week with the weeds and stuff being done, so at least, you know, hopefully they heard the message rather than had that scheduled already, so we'll see how that goes, and I'll reach out with a signal first thing in the morning, and we'll get that rolling.
Mr. White.
Yes. Steve?
Yes, sir.
As we had talked about on Fifty-seventh and Broadway, that dangerous part of Maryville.
Yep.
Have you had anything back from the Indiana Department?
I have not. I have reached out to Alan Holder-Reed, who is the district traffic engineer. Because there's several, there's several areas that actually need those.
Yes. You're absolutely right. I can only speak for that particular one, because I come out on Broadway quite often from that. But even the turn signal there saying stop until the light is red or whatever would be, so would you please let me know when you made contact with that guy?
Absolutely. When I have some resolution of that, you'll be the first one to know, and we'll go from there.
And I really feel special that I'd be the first one to know. Thank you.
Chief Patino.
Yes, thank you. Just brief, going back to the job fair, it was very successful. We had representation there with the Maryville Police Department, and we had over twenty-five people that showed up interest, were joining our department. Also, it was asked of me to look into the animal control issue that we're experiencing right now, and doing just that, we put it on our Facebook, and we also put word of mouth out there. And just like so many other businesses, it's kind of hard to get some people to come out and want to be a part of it, but we're going to continue to push until we, mission accomplished. I wanted to bring in the current status as far as where we at, and it was done by my operations commander, but I was in a meeting with the superintendent today, and he was in federal court, so hopefully the next time I can bring that. That's all I have.
Thank you, chief. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have ordinances on first readings, number twenty-one dash twenty, ordinance of the Town of Maryville authorizing intuents of Town of Maryville, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Pettit, second from Mr. Hardaway, for approval of ordinance twenty-one dash twenty. Any questions or discussion on this ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yes, could you bring me up, Sean, on the Economic Development Revenue Bonds? Where is that going to?
This is, Leonard, this is the first reading for the Twin Acres Tiff District that we're in the process of creating. We did the third resolution at the Plan Commission last Tuesday night. Mr. Anderson is in the audience representing Weiss entities. This is where the town is putting their name on the bond, but Mr. Weiss or Weiss entities is actually buying the bond and backing it, so there's no money out of the town. When the Tiff monies are collected, the town receives, Pat, is it a hundred thousand dollars, the first hundred thousand dollars each year?
That's correct.
We receive a hundred thousand dollars, then Mr. Weiss gets the balance of the Tiff money and puts it toward paying off the debt service.
Mr. Anderson, would you mind approaching the podium?
Richard, do you want to come up and?
You've been sitting there so patiently all meeting, and we need to have you say a few words.
I know it's a little old in here.
You could climb in that file folder, Rich, and warm up.
Yes. This is part and parcel of the whole procedure that we're going through, and as Sean said, this is the first reading on the bond, and then the bonds will be issued. Mr. Weiss will buy them, as Sean said, and then the tax levy will pay it back minus the hundred thousand dollars. So it's basically a way for the infrastructure being, that's listed in the economic development. I think you all got this package. This was done by Tom Pittman with regard to this project, and this is actually the area of the district that you're going to approve in the resolution later tonight. It's in the purple area.
And then we'll have a resolution, Leonard, at the August tenth RDC meeting, the confirmatory resolution in the Tiff District will be established. When the bonds are sold, Don will use the proceeds to begin demolition immediately, right, Richard?
Yes.
He wants to start in September, October to demolish the grocery store.
Okay. I didn't know that was the same.
The whole strip center's coming.
Yeah, the whole strip center, everything's going.
Wise guys included, it'll be gone.
Okay. I wasn't aware that was the same. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Certainly. Councilman Spann?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilman Uszak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
And Councilman Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, then motion carries. Mr. Pettit, is there any reason to read this on second reading? I don't think we have any advertising.
No, we, Mr. Pittman advised that we wait till August tenth until the Tiff District is established.
Yes, very good. Thank you. Moving on tonight to resolutions, I believe we're going to ask for a motion to table the next resolution, is twenty-one dash forty-eight at the request of the petitioner.
So moved.
Table.
One of you do a second, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway, second from Mr. Pettit, to table resolution twenty-one dash forty-eight at the request of the petitioner. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolution twenty-one dash fifty-five. Let me catch up myself, sorry. This is the companion resolution, right? For Twin Acres?
Yes.
Yes, this is a resolution that confirms the designation of the territory that was the Plan Commission reviewed at its meeting on the twentieth.
This is the third step, Mr. President, in the four-step process of a Tiff District.
And then the ordinance that you just talked about, that needs to be published in notices, and that's why you can't do the second one tonight.
I agree. I forgot about that. Thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash fifty-five.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Pettit, second from Mr. Minchuck, for approval of twenty-one dash fifty-five. The only thing I want to say on this before we vote, or open to the public, or, I'm sorry, comment, you know, Mr. Weiss and Weiss entities, this complex could be built anywhere, but he decided to keep it in Maryville, where he's going to spend a lot of money raising a forty-five thousand square foot grocery store that nobody wants to go into anymore, and take down part of a strip center to rejuvenate the whole corner there at Ninety-third and Taft. So I just want to thank, you know, your client, and I'll do that in my own words, too, but this is going to be a great project, and I'm looking forward to this being cleaned up and the economic development it's going to create.
He thinks it's going to be one of the premier communities in this whole area.
Yeah.
I think you'll be really happy with what you see there once it's done.
This will be an ideal project for our new Economic Development Director to get her feet wet, Mr. Bella.
I think so.
That's great.
I'm sure.
Any other questions or comments on the motion before us? Seeing none. Clerk Treasure, Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Spann?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Minchuck?
Yes.
Is it Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
All seven in favor.
Seven to zero. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Are there any BZA or large gathering actions before us tonight? I don't believe so. Any old business? New business? Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, sir. It pains me to say this, but it needs to be done. I know today's news and the CDC changed the regulations after we made our mask motion at our last meeting. Things are kind of up and down a lot, and I know they're up now. As you can all see, I'm definitely not a mask guy, but I think instead of making motions every meeting, changing our order, changing what we should be doing, things are up and down, I think we should just make a motion tonight to, whatever the CDC guidelines are, that's what we follow, unless we have a special circumstance here at the town.
Second. A motion from Mr. Minchuck, second from Mr. Spann, was it, Mr. Hardaway, I'm sorry, Mr. Hardaway, to follow the recommendations when it comes to face coverings of the CDC.
That would be, I'm sorry, if you're going to make the amendment for mask coverings, just saying whatever the CDC recommends, that's what we follow.
Okay. Your second hold?
That's good.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carries, Mr. Minchuck.
That'll be effective in about twenty minutes.
Effective in twenty minutes, all right. Any other new business before us tonight? Seeing none, open to the public. Is there any public comment this evening? Please approach the podium microphone and state your name and address for the record, and how are you tonight?
Good.
Good.
My name is Marion Massa. I spoke at the last council meeting about animal control and several comments that were made by the police department concerning the animals, and just a couple questions, because I have talked to several people, that Patricia Lloyd called twice to report a dog in her yard, and first she was ignored, and then the female officer was extremely rude to her, so her husband called back the next day, and whoever he spoke to, because I did ask him for the police names, and he said the comment was, "I am not putting no stinking dog in my car." They were very upset because they're long-term residents of Maryville.
Yeah, you mentioned that at the last time when you made a comment, right?